All right, and with that, we'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Widener, roll call. Dr. Campley?
Here.
Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Keenan?
Here.
Mr. Liggett?
Here.
Mr. McKinney?
Here.
Dr. Sadler? Mr. Saylor?
Here.
Dr. Reston?
Here.
Ms. White? Here. 1.03, 1.04, Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection. 1.05, reading of the PVSD mission statement. Mr. McKinney?
The mission of the Perkerman Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally.
Thank you so much. 1.06, approval of the agenda. And I, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. 1.07, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for meetings on November 11th and December 2nd, which is the reorganization meeting and the work session? So there's actually three meetings, I guess. May I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
A motion in a second. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. 1.08 was our special recognition from last week, and that brings us to 1.09, comments on any topic. At this point, the board will afford the public a three-minute allocation to make a comment on any topic. Just state your name and municipality, and I open the floor. You just have to hit the button on, on the bottom.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Herb. I'm from Skipback Township. And I had sent an email to Mr. Fuller, and I did speak with Mr. Mitchell and Dr. Fuller with regards to looking at bringing back, sorry, I feel like I'm talking really loud here, bringing back some programs that we've had at the high school before, specifically around family consumer science. I have six children in the district, three at the high school right now. When I looked at the course selection, there is a big gap, and there's not, there's nothing in there with regards to looking at child development, food and nutrition, manufacturing, and textiles. And I know that was something that we did have in years past, and looking at it, I think it was in 2018, and I could be wrong with that date, but it looked like it was removed. And I don't necessarily know why, but I know that that would afford our students some other opportunities to do career exploration. I believe also, there was a, they, the child development class also did a, like a mini daycare. All the schools in the local area, Springfield, I believe, Norristown, Upper, Lower Marion, Upper Marion, North Penn, Satterton, all have these type of programs. In fact, I know Springfield is just adding some new ones, specifically global cuisine, and looking at home decor, which will provide our other, our students opportunities also to do some career exploration. And with the comprehensive plan, I know you already have your courses selected for next year, but moving forward, I think it's something that would benefit all of our students. They get a taste of it in middle school, but I think it should continue into high school as well. The other thing is, on another note, is middle school cheerleading used to be a thing here at Perkerman Valley. I was a middle school cheerleader. And with our cheerleading program getting to states last year, that was amazing. And I think we need a theater program very much similar to that, as we do for football, that they get the same, that they follow through whatever the coaches want all the way through the high school. So hopefully, that will be coming, hopefully that's something that Mr. Feltie will bring to the board. But those two things, I think, should be coming back, because they were programs that we already had here in Perkerman Valley. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else? All right. Seeing no other comments, we'll move on to Section 2, Reports and Presentations. Student Liaisons Report. Ms. Tremba and Mr. Lees.
Good evening. Since we last met, our students have been very busy, and we have a few accomplishments that we'd like to highlight. Beginning with music, congratulations to Emma Philip and Peyton Bufordi. They both qualified for District Choir, and they will represent PV at the District 11 Choir Festival in February. We'd like to just wish them luck and extend our congratulations. We also have many winter concerts upcoming, beginning with Middle School West's Winter Concert tomorrow night. Middle School East and the High School have their concerts on December 12th and 18th, respectively, and we'd like to wish all of our musicians good luck.
And then in terms of athletics, many of our teams are beginning competition and are off to a great start. Girls' basketball, winner track, and bowling, bowling all had great success last week, and we'd like to encourage our athletes to keep working hard this season. Finally, with the holiday season approaching, we'd like to wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday season, with their family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you both so much. 2.02, President's Report. I have nothing. 2.03, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Russell, anything additional?
I just have one item to add, if I may. Thank you, Ms. White. So, last evening and today, Mr. Marsh, Principal at Evergreen Elementary, and myself were out at Hershey to participate in the National Teacher of the Year competition, if you will, and ceremony. We had a finalist, one of 12, Mr. Kevin Tomlinson, fourth grade teacher at Evergreen. He, he did not win, but it is quite a prestigious honor to have been selected and made it to those 12. I'd like to recognize him as part of recognition in January, but just to share with the board, there were lots of people texting and wondering how he was doing or how he did do. There was a local teacher who, who was awarded and recognized from Haverford Township School District, so that was nice, close by. But it was really a nice ceremony, and I'm appreciative that I was able to participate and go. So more to come next month.
That's wonderful. Congratulations to him. And we look forward to seeing him next month. Mr. Subers, Solicitor's Report, 2.04.
No report.
Thank you so much. Board and District Committee Reports, 2.05. We did make the change to remove those couple, correct?
We did not. We were gonna wait until January.
Oh, we're gonna wait until January. Okay, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the board was completely comfortable with that, and there were no follow-up comments, I guess, really, or questions from last week.
Fair enough.
So we'll wait for January.
So then I guess I would ask if there are any follow-up questions or comments, out of curiosity. All right, seeing none. Wonderful. Section 3, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? I see a motion. Is there a second? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Section 4, Education. Mr. McKinney?
Thank you, Ms. White. Section 401, Education Updates. Mr. Mitchell, Dr. Fuller, and Dr. Russell all presented a number of updates last week that we can, can be considering tonight. Moving on to 4.02, Approval of High School Program Planning Guide Changes. So I request to approve the 2025-2026 High School Program Planning Guide changes as presented. Any resources necessary for new courses are indicated on the summary of changes to be approved.
There was a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Section, or 4.03, Request to Approve Revisions to the 2024-2025 High School Parent-Student Handbook.
So there's a motion. Is there a second? Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Section 4.04, Request to Approve the Implementation of a Youth Aid Panel at the High School, Beginning on or Around the Second Semester of the 2024-2025 School Year. Pending final documentation.
Motion. Is there a second? Motion in a second. Any conversation?
I got a question. Was the MOU adjustable, or no?
The MOU has been revised to complete and fill in PVSD where there was a blank, to adjust the date, so that it's second semester, 24-25 school year, yeah?
Yeah, that's off of my email earlier today, but are we able to make any other adjustments to the MOU, or no?
The MOU was actually developed by Mr. Subers, so I mean it-
Actually, that MOU was, I had obtained it, it was the MOU presented by the ADA to Upper Marion, and I was just providing that to you as informational, for informational purposes. So I did not develop that MOU.
So-
We reviewed it, and I mean, there's nothing, I mean, I don't know the answer to your question whether or not the ADA, you know, to what extent the ADA would accept changes to it. I'm not sure if there's a specific issue.
I personally just object to the third whereas, whereas a party's acknowledged that racial and ethnic disparities may exist in school-based discipline in the juvenile justice system.
I don't know that, that that would be something that, you know, would be a deal killer. It's a whereas clause. Whereas clauses are just, you know, recitals of background information. I don't believe the recitals were incorporated by a reference into the actual MOU, so it's not even part of the, you know, the memorandum of understanding. I don't know what, I mean, what the sentiment of the board is in that regard.
My takeaway from the whereas is, is part of the reason and rationale as to why the YAP was developed in the first place, and one of the, the purposes of, you know, some, some of the thought process into why this program was developed was to help with that keeping the prison, the school-to-prison pipeline.
Break the cycle.
Break the cycle, yes, I was trying to find the wording. Because, and in order to do that, it's that understanding that there is this racial and ethnic disparity, just like there's achievement gaps with racial and ethnic groups, and acknowledging that that exists, and that's why we're doing this, is to help kind of keep that in mind so that we can break that, that cycle and that pattern.
Does anyone have anything else to add? Okay, seeing no other comments or questions. We have a motion in a second, so we will take a vote. All in favor of moving this forward?
Request a roll call.
Excuse me?
Request a roll call.
Oh, okay, roll call, go, uh, vote, Ms. Widener? Dr. Campley?
Aye.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Liggett?
Yes.
Mr. McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Saylor?
No.
Dr. Weston?
Yes.
Ms. White? Yes. Motion passes. Okay, we're moving on to 4.05, the approval of the ELA pilot. I'm so sorry, Todd.
That's quite okay, Ms. White. Request to approve the LA pilot with the resource of my perspectives at Middle School East and West for the duration of the second semester of the 2024-2025 school year, and no cost to the district. The move?
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions or, or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
4.06, Approval of the 2025-26 Instructional Calendar. Request to approve the 2025-26 Instructional Calendar as presented and recommended by the District Administration, which is the first draft. Option 1.
Thank you, Dr. Russell.
So the motion is to approve the first draft of the calendar. Thank you. Dr. Russell, pulling it up. Is there a second to the approval, to the motion to approve?
There are two calendars in the administrative content. Which one are we approving?
The motion is to approve the first option.
Option 1.
Can that be clarified in the, in the minutes, which one you're actually recommending? Because I, I was confused as well.
So it would be draft for option number one, uh, number three, so the first one that's actually listed in our-
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's the one where the Friday after Yom Kippur would still be a school day.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So it's the one that's being shown on the screen right now?
It is.
It is.
What's the PV-
Admin contact.
Well, we haven't had a second, so we can't discuss.
Is there a second?
The motion was made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, it says October X for PVH, Perkerman Valley High School Asynchronous Day. Do we have a date for that?
We don't have a date yet for the keystones, which is why that's represented, but that would be the intent of those days, similar to what we've done this year, and a couple of years prior.
The same thing for May? May, so October's PSATs.
Right, the date hasn't been published yet.
May's keystones.
May's keystones, correct.
Is there additional discussion? Do we feel comfortable voting? You need a second, Dr. Russell?
May I ask a question for the administration? Why are we recommending the option 1 versus the option 2? The differences being, as I can see, the Friday after Yom Kippur would be in session with option 1, and there's an additional in-service day in February compared to option 2, if I'm correct? Why is there, is there a reason why administration wants the option 1 more?
Yes, the preference is to have that flex day, that in-service day, which is one of the 10 teachers must fulfill lined up to President's Holiday, which is how it exists this year, and it has existed in the past, as opposed to extending that long weekend or creating it in October. So the preference is to keep it at the President's Holiday Weekend. It would represent one of the 10 that teachers must fulfill.
Am I incorrect? In clicking through both, it seems like both, both calendars have President's Day off.
Yeah, but it's the Friday before.
Friday before, oh, understood. So to make it a longer one. Sorry, I was focused on Presidents.
Yeah, right.
I think the idea is, being in the teacher thing, is February and- I think the idea is, being in the teacher thing, is February and March are really long months, and we get so many days off, October, November, December, that it's just really nice if there can be a little bit of a break to rejuvenate and have that time to work with your colleagues and do things to kind of bring it back during those long months, because, just my two cents.
I'd also like to offer the board, I want to be very clear about the May X date that Mr. Saylor just pointed out, PVH's asynchronous day keystones. It's actually days typically that the high school has requested, there are three scheduled this year. If you look at the current calendar, you'll see them listed, May 12th, 15th, and 21st. So there are three days that the high school has moved towards requesting, exist in the calendar as asynchronous virtual days because of the number of students that participate in the keystones and how challenging it can be to change the schedule and accommodate. So, back on the calendar that's being proposed to you, option one, I just want to be clear, this is May X, Y, and Z, technically. So I don't want that to come as a surprise.
Can you explain the differential in trimester end dates? One's the 21st, and then the other version's November 30th? Why is there a nine-day gap for a one-day calendar change?
I'd have to, I'd have to count those, Mr. Saylor, I'm not sure. That certainly on the surface raises a question, the 21st versus the 10th.
No, um, version, version, option two, version two says trimester ends in elementary schools on November 21st.
Right.
Option one, version three says it ends on the 30th, so that's a nine-day differential, and I don't actually think...
No, yeah, he's looking at November, the triangle?
No, go to the bottom of the file, it says trimester ends November 30th. What version is that that you have up on the screen?
This is two, option two.
So go to option one, version three?
Okay.
And scroll down to the very bottom, it says trimester ends November 30th.
But that's not what's reflected on the...
Yeah, I would say that's a typo, we have to correct that, yeah. It looks like it should be November 20th, one day different.
20th.
Yes.
But it's correct on the numbers.
Yes. Yes.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, honey.
Um, I do think the board should reconsider the entire week off for Thanksgiving and two weeks for Christmas. To have that long of a break and then potentially have students off in the third week of June, when they'll be starting again in August, just seems like a mistake to me. The school districts in the area near us don't get nearly as long off for either break, and I think students and teachers would prefer to be off as early as possible in the summer, and that's the trend that we've been going towards in the past years, and it seems to finish in the third week of June is just a little absurd to me.
That was part of our conversation from, from last week as well, was about the duration. Unfortunately, sometimes the holidays fall a little screwy based on grouping days off, so because Christmas and New Year's fall on a Thursday, I think that was part of the reasoning for the two weeks off in December. Thanksgiving week, we have traditionally had off that whole week for part of it being conferences. I would only note that if we don't use any inclement weather days, the date slides back for the last day of school.
Was there any more thought, just to kind of speak to what Ms. Tremba said, is we had talked about maybe chopping off part of that first week in December of the holiday break and doing like a day and a half? Did anyone, when you took that back, was there any consideration to that?
There was minimal support to actually attend school two days. The half-day, I don't think got a lot of traction, really. But there was, there was an individual who did speak up and advocate in the same way that Ms. Tremba is, that we bring students to school the 22nd and 23rd, you know, and that, that's something that we talked about last week also, that, that could be, depends on the board, and we could switch that.
And that's what actually was, I was referring to, was the 22nd and the 23rd, and maybe not all of the 20, I think a half-day maybe on the 23rd, I don't know that I would bring them on the full day.
I think the half-days are ones that individuals question at that point in the year, how meaningful it would end up being, and the attendance. It would be a school day, but I don't know that it would actually end up being a school day, a genuine school day.
Well, a productive instructional day.
I would say, I would argue back and say that whatever day is the last day before they leave for winter break isn't very much a productive day anyway. It's usually when they're doing their festive end-of-day activities. At least if it's a half-day, it's a half-day of that stuff happening, instead of it being a full day of that stuff happening. The elementary level, usually it's like a concert and some classroom parties. Middle school, it's usually fun activities within each shorter class, but it's usually very rare, even at the high school level, with my daughter going through the high school, is it ever an actual typical classroom day for any student. And it would be regardless of whether that day was the 23rd or the 19th. Whatever the last day is before they leave for winter break is going to be your fun-filled ending day. So you can either have it be the 23rd, or you can have that day be the 19th, but it's going to be a random fun-filled day of activities that are not hardcore learning days. It's just, it's the nature of the beast, and it's a good time for kids to come together with their peers and their, their teachers and create rapport and, and meaningful moments. So I'm not against that they're doing it, I'm just saying, to be fair, it's happening.
When Ms. Tremba had made that comment, that was exactly what we were talking about as well last week. You said that it was brought up, was, I mean, what was the consensus of the, the administration when they brought it up? You said there was one person that was in favor of it, but nobody else was?
The consensus was to represent it as it appears tonight.
So that's still, I agree, I think that those two days, having it, having it later in the summer, getting out completely, even if we have the, the three days that are inclement that we don't use, I mean, that's still, you're still looking at the end of the second full week of June.
Yeah, mhm, yeah.
Motion to table?
A motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, any discussion?
There's no discussion on the motion.
No discussion on the, okay, no worries. All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
I didn't count it either yet. Yeah. I don't know, I just thought you were going to say something. You looked like you were about to speak, so...
Can I request a roll call?
Sure, yeah. Okay, so the motion is to table until January for approval of the calendar. So, Ms. Widener, if you can call roll.
Dr. Campley? Uh, Mr. Fountain?
Table it.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Liggett?
No.
Mr. McKinney?
No.
Dr. Sadler? Uh, Mr. Saylor?
Aye.
Dr. Weston?
Aye.
Ms. White?
No.
I have five to table it, yes, it passes.
So if I, if I could ask the board, it sounds as if there may be the start of some consensus around putting the 22nd and 23rd back in the calendar. Is there, is there support for that? Is that the direction we should go? Is that our preference as a board?
I think that that's a good idea.
Okay. Others?
Still got a week and a half.
I think two weeks seems pretty darn long.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we'll add back in the 22nd and 23rd. Anything else that stands out that should be considered by the administration before we bring it back in January? Okay, thank you.
4.07, enrollment reports, which were presented last week. Any change in information, Mr. Mitchell? Okay. 4.08, approval... 4.08 is approval of the following appointments to the Professional Development Committee as part of the 2024-2025 Comprehensive Planning Process.
Is that a motion from you?
That is a motion.
Okay, wonderful, a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
4.09, approval, motion to approve field trips as presented, it's the high school girls' basketball team, with a trip to Tampa, Florida.
I can, uh, some of, excuse me.
Motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, any discussion?
Uh, yeah. Just, just out of curiosity, what's the purpose of the trip? It just says, what, three varsity basketball games here? Is this a tournament? Is this an exchange program? What, what's the purpose of the trip?
The basketball tournament.
Sorry?
The basketball tournament.
This is a tournament.
Basketball tournament.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
And that is my section, Ms.
Thank you so much, Mr. McKinney. Dr. Weston, section five, business.
Uh, item 5.01, Finance Committee of the Whole Report. Mr. Weaver, do you have anything to add to last week's presentation?
I have nothing to add at this time, thank you.
Very good. Items 5.02, 3, 4, and 5 are all on consent. Item 5.06 is the Grants and Donation Report. Is there any questions or discussions around this item? Seeing none, that concludes section five.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. Section six, Payment of Bills, Mr. Saylor.
Thank you, Ms. White. 6.01, Ratification of Bills and Payments and Payroll, and I so move.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. 6.02, Motion to Approve the Treasurers Report and Financial Statements, and I so move.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
If you would like, I could do the next section.
Wonderful.
This is great. Professional Personnel is all on consent.
Good job, thank you. Took all of Dr. Sadler's.
I could do Don's too, if you want.
Don, you want to go right on? All right, there we go. Mr. Fountain, section eight, Support Personnel.
Okay, all of section eight, Support Personnel, is on consent.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Fountain. Thank you, Mr. Fountain. Section nine, Governance, Mr. Liggett.
Thank you. Uh, 9.01 is the first reading of the policies that are attached. 9.02 is to have the second reading and adopt the policies that are listed, and I so move.
Motion and a second, is there any comment or question?
Yes, I'd like to table 1.031, excuse me, 1.03, 1.031, 1.032.
It's a motion, too?
Yes.
Is there a second? Okay, I'm not seeing a second.
Second.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, you want to do a vote to, we have, we vote to table, correct? Okay, could you, before we vote, can we, can I ask why you're looking to table those?
If you let me answer, but I don't think you will.
Yeah, I mean, technically, under the Roberts rules, there's no discussion.
No discussion at the table, okay, no problem, we can just vote. Okay, so the motion is to table 1.03, 1.03.1, 1.03.2, those are just for the edification of the record, the Title IX revisions to the nondiscrimination policies.
Point of order? The motion is for all the, all the policies that are there, it was not a split motion, so therefore, we have to table the entire motion. Because unless we're splitting the motion first...
The record shows in the minutes that I specifically requested that these three be off consent, the rest on consent.
Understood, and I, that's how I worded it. If you notice though, whoever, in the writing of the agenda essentially, that was...
Correct.
Denied, which is why I made the motion for all policies.
Yeah, I understand that, Mr. Weaver. But at the, at the, at the work session, I specifically requested these three be removed from consent, the rest remain on consent.
Okay, so we are, the vote is to table 1.03, 1.03.0, 1 and 2.
No, he's called a point of order on that, he's saying that the entire...
He cannot table it, you can table the motion, you cannot table a portion of the motion. He could go and amend my motion to split it.
It's already been, it's a mistake.
Technically, I guess he's correct, um, I would, I mean, we can go through the mechanization of a motion to amend and then the table.
I can withdraw my motion, withdraw my table, which is fine, and Roberts rules of order, so it's withdrawn, and I'm going to make an amendment to...
The motion as presented.
I'm gonna make an amendment, well, I'm gonna make an, well, hold on, give me a second, I, I need my brain to think, because now I could lose two separate ways, and I only like losing one way. Give me one second. I'd like to amend 9.02, Approval to Hold Second Reading and Adoption Policies, and change that to 9.02A, which would be a motion to approve and hold a second reading of policies 1.03, 1.031, and 1.032, and a 9.02B, which would be approval to hold a second reading and adopt policies of 1.04, 113.1, 113.2, 202, 206, 234, 236.1, 254, 607, 702, 805.2, and 918. And just to clarify, that doesn't mean that we're voting on the motions, we're just voting to amend the two motions that way.
Okay, so, go ahead.
So we need a second.
I guess the question I have is, so...
Well, you, wait, you need, you need the, you need the, okay, a motion and a second, and go ahead, Mr. McKinney.
Go ahead.
Oh, so the question I have is, the motion is defeated, or we go back to the original motion, correct?
The, there was no vote on the original motion, there's pending before the board a motion to amend to split it, split it into two motions as presented by Mr. Saylor.
So there was a motion and a second to split. Is there any discussion about or dissent to split, as requested? Okay, I'll go ahead and vote, all in favor to split the motion into A and B?
Aye.
Against?
No.
Roll call, Ms. Widener?
Dr. Campley?
This is to split it, this is to split the motion.
I don't care if we split it, fine, aye.
What? She will split it, is what she's saying.
Uh, Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Liggett?
No.
Mr. McKinney?
No.
Uh, Dr. Sadler. Mr. Saylor?
Aye.
Dr. Weston?
No.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, so the motion is now split into parts A and B, and we can go ahead and vote on parts A and B.
Motion to table to 9.02A. Motion to table to 9.02A.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any comment or question about tabling?
Uh, it's not, now you're in the back.
I can't, with the when we can and when we can't, okay, that's fine. So, all in favor to table, motion A.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, we'll do a roll call, Ms. Widener. We're gonna keep Ms. Widener on her toes tonight.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Campley?
No.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Liggett?
No.
Mr. McKinney?
No.
Mr. Saylor?
Aye.
Dr. Weston?
No.
Ms. White?
No.
Five nays, five nos.
Now we have to.
We need a motion to approve 9.02.
Hey. Mr. McKinney, would you like to make them, or Mr. Liggett, would you like, whose section is this? Mr. Liggett, would you like to make a motion to, um, approve A?
There is.
Oh, wait a minute.
There is a motion, it's pending.
Yeah. Actually, we had a motion to amend.
To table it.
So we actually do need a motion to move.
Move forward.
9.02A.
Yes, correct.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. White, thank you. Very similar to when these original motions were put into play, this board stated that they were put into play because there was pending, um, executive orders coming from the federal government. Uh, there were pending law changes coming from the federal government. I will let everyone know that there are pending law changes coming from the federal government and executive orders to go out on January 20th at 12:01 PM. With those executive orders bound to go out on January 20th at 12:01 PM, it is my assertion that our school district should not pass these policies, and we should wait until we see the executive orders. This is following similar discussions this board has already had, where we made changes to these discrimination and Title IX policies based off of upcoming legislation that was coming in August. So I'm following that same pattern. We should wait until the new executive order goes out. It was stated today, some of those executive orders will go out literally at 12:01 PM. We should wait and see what those executive orders are.
I tend to disagree. Uh, the reason that I would disagree with that is, although the intent may be for executive orders to happen on January the 20th, in the current period that we're in, and existing laws and rules exist, and until we know exactly how these would be done, you're just using a crystal ball to figure out what this executive order is. Until we know exactly what it is from the incoming administration, it is irresponsible for us to not act on what is currently law, which is Rule 2024 of Title IX. That was enforced after a period of over a year of public comment in the federal government. Now, is it possible to reverse that in a different way? It's possible, depending on how an executive order goes, but the rule was not made by executive order, so typically it would not be able to be erased with an executive order. Either way, these policies are tuned to be in compliance with the rules as they exist. And I believe it is irresponsible for us to assume what the change is going to be. I have no problem with meeting again, as in the Policy Committee, whether it be in February or some other time next year, but until we know what is actually coming down the pike and what is real, we need to deal with what is real, which is the current laws that are on the books, and I think anything else is irresponsible.
These, these aren't, uh, actually the laws that are on the books. These are, um, rules, and the laws are on the books, and these are not real. The law was real, and it was based in reality, and these policies are not. So, to put these in place, knowing that they're a huge stretch of the imagination, um, it is, you know, to use the words we've been using, is, it's just irresponsible, knowing that we're just going to have to fix it all again next year. I don't think that it's appropriate to, um, try to enforce these policies and rules which are unenforceable, unconstitutional, and are going to be enjoined and held up in courts for years for the people that try to use them and follow them. So I think it's wisest if we do wait and see. Wait and see with the status quo, as Title IX has been read and interpreted and enforced for the last 50 years, rather than try to change it based on the new reality as it came to pass in 2021, 2020, 2023. Um, you know, this, this new, uh, idea of, uh, you know, rewriting Title IX to take away women's rights. So, I, I don't agree that we should be messing around with our Title IX, given the upheaval that is going on. I mean, if we want to wait and see, let's wait and see, that's all I'm saying.
Well, both you and Mr. Saylor were on the Policy Committee that passed these policies as written. This is already on its second reading, so last month, you would have known that.
I think something changed the time that happened.
But I don't, it doesn't matter about the election. What matters is about what are the laws and rules that are on the books currently? After January 20th, when we know what's going on, or after we know what's going on because we get something from the Department of Education, I think it's valid that we should revisit these. But until such time, our school is still operating. Our students need to know what is happening, and they need to know what their rights are. And their rights, as of today, are covered under Title IX, Rule 2024, through most of our schools.
That's not, this isn't taking it away.
It changes the, the procedures that are used. This, the, most, all four of these policies are written in such a way to conform with both 2024 rule.
No, they're not. They're, they're conforming with an engerman of a current lawsuit that stipulates that one magical building out of our other awesome buildings has its own little rules.
And those rules, you see, this is part of the problem, that people think that the rule, the 2024 rule, only had one application. It applies to procedures when a Title IX violation happens, it concerns with the rights of pregnant students.
Yeah, but you're making it seem like if these tables, if these motions were tabled, or were tabled, or waited to be put to second approval, that we would currently be, like, in a phase where we could be sued, because that's kind of what you hindered at.
What, what I'm saying is our policies would then be inconsistent with the federal Title IX.
Your actual conversation back in May, and, and, and what comes before May, April, April and May, was talking about, the reason we need to pass these policies is because in August, we might be breaking the law. That was, your specific comment, that's what you said.
Correct, and we are now in compliance.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about breaking any laws, because we're not breaking any laws, L-A-W, no laws are being broken.
No, we're, we're, we'd be changing our policies that don't reflect current law.
The Senate, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, is taking up bills right now, and so is the House, to change these, which is perfectly fine.
And that's all future tense.
I'm talking about delaying this till we get word from the federal government and the state government of what might happen, but that doesn't mean we're, like, in some type of loophole where, where the school can't, can't function. We still have our policies that are currently in place. I just want to make sure, you make it sound like if we do this, that, that all of a sudden pregnant students might not know what to do.
Our policies will no longer be in congruence.
That's not true.
Yes, it is.
Do you agree with that, Mr. Schubers?
The regulations that became effective August, in August of 2024, do have the force of law.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, but for the exception pursuant to the injunction, you know, the school's subject to the injunction, they apply to our other school buildings.
Correct.
Personally, I feel like we need to do what we need to do, based on the rules that are set forth today, and if the rules change down the road, then we change the policies, because that is why they are fluid documents, that's why we have a Policy Committee. And I'm prepared to vote today, based on the rules of today, and the rules that are governed by law today, and support the students and ensure that they're protected today. And I'm, you know, quite frankly, if things change because of a new governing body, then we'll deal with that when that time comes, but for right now, I want to make sure we do whatever we need to do to make sure our students are protected, and I don't want to be changing things and taking away protections that they have and that are afforded to them because of a, a one-off maybe that might never come to fruition.
Discussion.
Ms. White?
Mr. Saylor called for discussion.
Are you recognizing me?
Yes.
I call the question.
And what you're.
I was just waiting to discuss.
Oh, are you asking to discuss?
I did, but I wasn't allowed.
Called the question.
Question is called, therefore we need to vote whether or not the motion, whether we will vote on the motion.
Leave us to Chair's prerogative to call the question.
That is why I asked if I was recognized.
He really is very clear about his, the rules.
I don't think so, but.
He doesn't think so.
I'm not sure what I'm being asked right now. Is it the procedural issue on calling the question, or is it the?
So, so are we, are we done, does anyone have anything new to add to this? Because it seems like we've kind of got our opinion on what, what tack to take. You said your piece. Mr. Liggett, Mr. Fountain, uh, Mr. Saylor, you said your piece. Do you have anything additional that you'd like to discuss about it?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. I would like to remind the.
The question's been called.
Uh, it's, it's.
Requires a second.
I don't, I don't have any, any desire to limit conversation or debate. I, I think that if there's something new to be offered, that would be, that would be helpful, I'm willing to entertain that part of the discussion. I don't have any desire to limit debate. I just, we don't need to scream into the void, though. So if you have something new to offer, I, I welcome it.
And that's my point, if there's some new information that Mr. Saylor wishes to offer, I'm glad to hear it or whatever, but if it's just to keep going around and around and around to see who can.
Well, let's see what he has to say.
I apologize, Mr. McKinney, I didn't realize that my voice wasn't heard. We can, we can call a question, I agree, you're right. I have nothing new, no, it's just a void, I got you.
I mean, you're seconding.
Second.
Wait, can I just ask a procedural question? What does it mean, because I do not, I am not a fanatic like you are with the whole rule of order thing, that's, you are like the guru. When I was done talking and he said discussion, what does that mean?
That means that he wanted to keep talking about it, um, but I think that that normally is called by, by the Chair, as I understand it.
You know, I just checked, it does require a second, it requires a two-third vote to, for approval, so, um, you know, if you want to call the que, there was no second on the, uh, the, call, call the question.
No, there was, I granted his second, because I was told my, I was in the void.
So you did second it?
Yes.
So we vote on it.
Absolutely.
We need to vote on the question.
Rock and roll.
On the calling of the question.
Calling the question.
Correct.
Yeah, it means to end debate.
Correct.
Correct.
Then we get to go home?
Well, then you have a vote.
But maybe we'll get permission to talk, Rowan, we're not sure yet.
I actually went out of my way to say that I wasn't limiting debate or discussion.
I know, I know you did. I appreciate that.
But there is, it's just procedural.
But, but the demeanor is, it's just not productive. Do you have something else to add?
No, because I seconded his vote.
To shut it down, to make a point.
Which means there should be no further discussion.
On principle, he stopped the discussion, okay, super duper. Ms. Widener, let's do a roll call vote.
This is on the motion to, to close debate and call the question.
Right. This is on, we have to vote, we have to.
This is just to end debate, this is not on the motion.
All in favor to end debate?
Tour.
Okay. Anyone against ending debate?
I'm against it, but that's just one.
You're against it, okay. Should we do a roll call to end the debate?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it. Let's, let's go around the table. Dr. Campley? Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
That's a no, so.
Mr. Liggett?
Yes.
Mr. McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Saylor?
No.
Dr. Weston?
Yes.
Ms. White?
No.
Question passes.
Uh, it's, it's got to be.
No, it's two thirds, doesn't pass.
Yeah, it doesn't pass.
Okay, so points been made, let's keep talking about it. So what else do we have to add?
Um, if I can actually step in really quick.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, do you have something to offer?
Yeah, so obviously me and Claire are sort of coming at this as members of the community who don't have access to the specific policy debates, or as much background as all, uh, as all of you do. And I know this is a lot of, sort of procedural, there's a new administration coming in, what policies will change, but this does seem to be a policy conflict over what is in Title IX. So if I could get some background over what exactly Mr. Saylor is not in support of in Title IX and Mr. Liggett is, I'd appreciate that.
So I was, Mr. Schubers, are you able to speak to, I, we've had kind of an ongoing dialogue about it.
Yeah, I mean, there's multiple, the, the changes that are reflected in the proposed new policy, uh, as Mr. Liggett stated, do deal with the, uh, the type of, the mechanics of the investigation and the appeal rights granted to, uh, parties, um, to a Title IX complaint, but they also add, uh, or specifically, or expressly, uh, designate additional, uh, classifications of protected persons, um, including, um, gender identity, sexual orientation, and things like that. So that's the main topic of dispute, is expanding the, or expressly expanding, uh, through policy and as was done through regulation, federal regulation, to identify additional protected classes of persons, uh, under Title IX, under the general guise of Title IX's prohibition of discrimination on the basis of sex.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. No, I'm just, uh, again, I'll.
Mr. Lees, I think the point is where the, where the different, the differential is, is that nothing has been changed since the updated language of Title IX was proposed, legally.
No, I would disagree with that.
Just for clar, I'll, I'll clarify, I mean, the regulations, Title IX itself, Title IX is a statute enacted by Congress which prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex. Effective August of this, of 2024, the United States Department of Education promulgated regulations, uh, which are permitted to do through a prescribed process, um, providing additional guidance which has the force of law, because it's a properly passed regulations until a court intervenes or they're changed, um, adding, again, expressed classifications that fall under Title IX's prohibition of discrimination regarding, on the basis of sex, as well as prescribing, uh, additional requirements for investigations or providing options for investigations, and prescribing additional appeal rights to, to, uh, to parties to a Title IX complaint, as well as changing, uh, some of the definitions relating to, um, uh, sexual harassment.
Correct. But I will note that this board in February made changes to our policies because of upcoming implementation of Title IX changes that were coming in June, that were delayed till August, that were delayed till August, excuse me, delayed, that were coming in June, but delayed till July, then delayed till August and split in half, because the federal government decided, we'll just do 50% of the changes that we wanted, because we can't get anyone to agree on the other 50%, uh, which would be sports related. So this board has, in the short term, set a precedence where they said, we will set policy based off of what's coming down, five months down the line, February, March, April, May, June, July, August, seven months. This board has done that before. I am saying, do it the same thing for something that's coming less than 30 days.
So, if I could make a sort of restatement of what I've heard, to make sure I'm in understanding, this is a disagreement about protections for students regarding gender identity and sexual orientation that has sort of been caught up in governmental decisions. sexual orientation that has sort of been caught up in governmental disagreements and has been delayed, and now we're looking at a new administration coming in that may have a different perspective, and, but the current issue in front of the school board is whether to go along and, um, go with the current Titan Line policy that still seems to be under dispute in the courts as well?
Yes and no, because then an organization called Moms for Liberty decided to get involved and sue schools, and then, like in PV, there was one school that didn't have a signature, so now that one school, I think it's Evergreen, no, South, one of the elementary schools, they, they have like a, some Wizard of Oz bubble wrapped around them where, where, where they don't have to follow the new law, they, they follow the old law because some gumped-up lawsuit, it, it gets very convoluted, and then, I think you have two regional district courts have said that the federal law is not legal, the Supreme Court decided not to take the case, then they took a secondary case, so it's, it's gummed up in legislators just not coming together in a room and making a final decision.
And just to clarify, too, that, um, the current policy in front of us is a policy that was written around, and the changes that are being made are being made to make sure that we are aligning it to what Title IX currently is. So regardless of anything that may have happened or not happened in the past, as it's being shared, it, the way it is right now is being put in front of us to make it align with the way the current ruling is, again, other than that one school that we can't make changes to. I will say that prior to anything being passed, there was, there was a Dear Colleague Letter, those are sometimes, um, strong recommendations that are put down from the Department of Education prior to it actually coming forth as an actual law or regulation, and the Dear Colleague Letter is something that tells us, you know, this is the direction we'd like you to take and to go before they can actually put it forth as a rule of law, or a, you know, it's just a recommendation, and that is typically what school districts will go with prior to getting it mandated. It's kind of like a, a way to say, hey, in good faith, we really think you should do this, this is what we're working towards, before we mandate it, we would really like you to try and get it started on your own, and there were Dear Colleague Letters and things out there prior to it becoming an actual mandate.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion then on this? Ms. White? Uh, I don't have the authority to.
Would you like to, are we allowed to vote now?
That's why I asked if there's any other discussion.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, all right, we'll go ahead and vote.
What is, restate exactly what the vote is.
The motion before, on the table before the board, I should say now to confuse anyone, is to approve nine oh two A, which is policies one oh three, one oh three point one, and one oh three point two.
And adopt them. Yeah, proven. Right. So Ms. Widener, if you don't mind. Dr. Campley?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yep.
Mr. Keenan?
No.
Mr. Liggett?
Yes.
Mr. McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Saylor?
No.
Dr. Weston?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes. Motion passes.
Fantastic, then we'll take up nine oh two B, which would be the rest of the policies from one oh four down.
For the second read and to adopt.
Second read and adopt.
Any discussion?
We need a second.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
And that was a motion.
That, that will be a, a motion because we split it.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Ms. White, who was the motion and second? I missed it.
Mr. Liggett and Dr. Campley. Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Section nine point zero three, uh, is to move the, um, annual data presentation from January the twenty-seventh to February the twenty-fourth, an iso move.
Motion, is there a second? Motion and a second? Any discussion?
Discussion, just real quickly, I know I'm standing on an island by myself, we've already know for this, um, it's our job as a board to, uh, create processes where goals are put in place and then to make sure those goals happen, this obviously is not one of them, we're moving back a data presentation, if you look at the presentation we got in the memo, uh, we look at our BLS scores, they're, they're showing some concerning trends, and, um, you know, it, it's our job to make sure things, uh, make sure the pipe is greased and it runs smoothly, and, um, the delay is, um, to me, something I'm not in favor of.
Noted, thank you, Mr. Saylor, anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Against.
Nine point zero four, the commitment to principles of governance is on consent. Last item is nine point zero five, discussion of board appointments to committees, which as of last week, we had no discussion, so unless anyone else has anything to add, Ms. White, my section is over.
Thank you so much, Mr. Liggett. That moves us to closing items, I will open the floor once again for comments from the audience on any topic, I, we afford the public three minutes to comment on any topic, just state your name and municipality, I open the floor. Seeing none, move on to section ten point oh two, comments from board members, I open the table.
I would just like to commend, uh, Mr. Lee and Ms. Tremba for again giving valuable insight to our community, especially to us as we tap these tough conversations, we need more of that, so I would, uh, encourage you to again, use your voice because it's powerful and it has meaning, so, so thank you again tonight for, for your comments and your thoughts.
Anyone else? Okay, notice of diddyo disclaimer, ten point oh three and ten point oh four adjournment, have a great rest of the year.